Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the first, twenty twenty-three, the time is now six P M. Regular meeting of the City Council.
Recording in progress.
My petitions to defy the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, everyone, for being here tonight, tonight's meeting, appreciate it. Uh, I'd say we'll have a person as well as Zoom. Your roll call, please.
Tabano?
Here.
Griggo?
Here.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item two, approval of the agenda, changes the motion, change to the agenda. Uh, did have one request, item one five B to remove that, there's been a change in that, so we would need to remove that from the agenda, I need a motion with the change.
Item three, approve the agenda with the, item number, uh, item number five B to remove the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item three, policy items and staff reports, Mr. Rube, do you have any?
Mr. Mayor, nothing tonight.
Item four, petitions or communications, roll call ready. Uh, Ms. Hubbard?
Mayor, council, staff. I'm back, uh, and I have to apologize for being back on this matter, I could have hoped to have taken a different turn, but, uh, I'm just confused. This has to do with the, with the city charter, the municipal code, and the sunshine laws. And so when I'm looking at, I've got about ten pages here, and only one page of this, and this comes from the article that was recently done after that meeting where we talked about a council member, a commission member being removed from a commission, for example. And I just thought it was fundamentally wrong, that in that case, and I also thought it set a very bad precedence for volunteers of members of any of the Trinidad boards and commissions, and also for just what I consider really important citizen legal matters, of where do you go lose the rulebook? Um, the city charter is much like the articles of a corporation for a business, they're the establishment or the foundational documents. The municipal code is the operational procedural document, kinda like the bylaws of a corporation. The city charter declares everyone that we're a city, and the municipal code tells everyone how we run the city, and how citizens interact with their city, and it's kind of our rulebook. Now, the decision that was made then actually was made to, that the city charter in this instance superseded municipal code. And I've got nine pages here, this is the city charter, just about that. And it really goes in boards and commissions, and the real point here is that members of boards and commissions shall be subject to two really important words, removal for just cause by majority vote of the council. Now, um, I've talked to several, had some time since then, and keep in mind, it says shall and subject to. It doesn't say members of the board and commissions shall be removed for just cause. So I had a chance to talk to three attorneys, one in real estate, one in corporate law, one municipal attorney that I used to work with years ago, and all agreed that shall and subject to in this charter, that really means something when they're put into something. And so, and so, uh, subject to, uh, the definition of that is mandatory, it's imperative, uh, or shall, you shall, it's command, it's an obligation. And subject to is conditional, it means it's dependent upon something. And I say all that to say, when I look at now the municipal code that manages and outlines how code of ethics and the code, uh, code of conduct is done, uh, which is Article seventeen municipal code, section two dash seventeen, the introduction and scope and framework, and I think this is really important, this is what the past leaders, folks that sat in your seat, both wrote and adopted, and it provides great detail, whereas the charter provides no detail, it just says you shall be subject to removal. The code, on the other hand, provides very specific details, it tells you exactly how to do it, okay? And so the code was implemented to highest levels of transparency, facility, integrity, ethical benefits, and if you go on this, another page to this, and I sent, I emailed you guys all of this stuff, and, and so you start looking how this, and the city attorney, um, made, made position was a certain thing, that this was superseded, and you would go by the city charter. However, the city attorney by our code isn't authorized to really do that. The city attorney is limited to review for factual or legal sufficiency of the complaint, not initiating any action or bypassing the code. And if you look at what, if you read in there, A, what he's allowed to do is he really just makes sure that the complaint is, is, is not groundless, it's not baseless, that it's a real legitimate complaint. And if he finds that it is any of those things, or just somebody trying to be spiteful, he can dismiss it, okay? But if he finds that it's not.
Mr. Allen, you have one minute left.
Then he can't, then he can't just dismiss it. Um, no place in, uh, in the city charter are, uh, justify the actions of any member being forced office of, uh, office of subordinate board or commission, and due process is provided to them. The commissioner in question made a big error, in my judgment, and frankly, there was cause for removal, that's not the point, due process is. If we start looking at through this, we have more pages. We need to get a better idea, and so that's, that has to do with, I, I'm confused because when I look at municipal code, and it's very detailed as a citizen, I'm thinking that's what I should be looking at, that's how I should be doing things, not the charter. We need to also do a much better job in the executive session when we come out of that thing. The color of sunshine law actually is very specific on a couple of areas, and I think we, we were ill advised in that. Uh, council members came out and said, you know, no, nothing else was discussed in there, and I believe them, they're good people. However, examples of this, um, are the, the failure during the public meeting to present underlying pros and cons. You've got this there, I think it's really important to do that, and I appreciate the time.
Of course.
I forgot to mention the rules, uh, that we are following before in our public, uh, pains, and I'll read them now, just, we only have one more person, just to let everybody know. Item one, in order to accommodate the high volume, um, and that's, that's the case, we have a lot of high volume of people wanting to comment, uh, we can, we have five minutes, but, uh, we can limit that to three minutes if it's necessary, or to a timeframe of an hour or two hours, whatever it may be. Item two, kind of ensure electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or set to silent mode. Item three, out of respect for all attendees, we request removal of hats and other head coverings during the meeting, unless required for religious or medical reasons. Item four, participants wishing to address the council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Item five, please note the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. Item six, we ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refrain from personal attacks, and use foul or abusive language, civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. And since item seven, we request all audience members to respect others' rights by not causing noise or disturbances that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. And we have another person, uh, Mr. Salvador Jimenez.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm asking for help where I live. I feel like our lives are in danger, they follow my wife, work, back and forth, get harassed in the park, got a stack of cards, of police cards, you know, cases, but nothing's been done. Somehow they can listen to our conversations in the home, so they've been trying to set me up at the park, either with kids, or just to get me out of that home. I don't know, what I've gathered, they're, uh, drug dealers and drug addicts. I've asked over the years for help, over and over. Been out to other agencies outside of San Luis County, other detectives, and CBI, Jody, friends of Chief Florioso, nothing, they feel sorry for what they're doing to me, they can't, because you guys can't help me. The feds know, but they're just watching. For most of you, I caught a terrorist in San Diego, I stopped another nine eleven, and the government didn't want to let you know about it, because they didn't want to panic. I took down four Iraqis that put a gun to a baby, that baby is an marine now, he's, you know, so kinda proud what I've done. I've done other things, I've worked with other agencies in San Diego, and I worked in military bases, so I deserve to get help in this town for somebody, and for my family. I've been asking for years and years, but people didn't believe, or didn't care, or whatever it is, but sooner or later, it's gonna settle down, you know, the dust, and this town's gonna be, like, just terrorized. No one's gonna want to come here, after they find out about my story. I don't want that to happen. I don't want that to happen. You got too many people investing a lot of money in this town, so, you know, I just wanna help, so it doesn't happen, I need some help from you guys, whatever you can do. I talked to Kim this week, they're gonna go out to my house for the lights, but I don't know, I just heard stories about some lights on Simpson's wrist, have to use it for, uh, you know, probably for a raid, so they could, for the law enforcement, I don't know if that's true or not, but, uh, the public's got a hold of it, city kids got a hold of it, everybody's got a hold of it, so, that's where I'm at. I'm in your hands. My wife works at, at, uh, Walmart, she deals with a lot of money, they know about the story, so, what can you guys do for me?
We don't, like I mentioned in the rules, we don't respond tonight, okay? If there's a response coming, it'll come from.
Okay, so I understand now.
Yeah.
But just, I want you guys to be aware, okay? I'm not a very good speaker, so, excuse me, so, you know, if someone's in trouble, you're in trouble on the streets, I'll jump in. I've helped law enforcement, when they got here, they were tangling, I jumped in and helped them, I scored in. I'm not a rapist, I'm not a murderer, you know, I'm just a good person, patriot, that's it.
Thank you. Item, item five, five eighty, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item five C, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Los Angeles County for conduct and administration of the twenty twenty-three, coordinated election to be held on eleven seventh, twenty twenty-three. Item D, approval of the bills in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Item E, approval of the payroll, July the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, through August the fourth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and sixteen cents. Any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, ongoing hearing, we don't have any tonight, or on item seven, we don't have any unfinished business. Item eight, eight-eight, consideration of Colorado Canyon Water Association, Association Contract Renewal, retain motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Viall?
Yes. Hello, Council.
Mayor? Good evening.
We offer consideration, uh, approval of a renewal for the Colorado Canyon Water Association. It started in May of nineteen eighty-one, expired in May of twenty twenty-one. It's a four parcel tract, there's only four water taps on it. The parcels are located just on Highway twelve, west of Jansen, at the top of the hill. Return to go to the Corps of Engineers office, on the opposite side of Highway twelve, there's four parcels over there, just four water taps, it's expired, and just didn't renew it, it's, they have a two-inch tap, they have a booster station that pumps the water up to their cisterns, and from there they have the booster pumps that provide water to the individual residences over there, so, it's pretty basic of our association, so it's just a renewal.
Questions?
I have a question, just.
Sure. No, go ahead.
So, does this association have the ability to add water taps to those parcels?
They would have to, I spoke with one, there's one of the parcels is now under contract, that's one of the reasons they're wanting to get this renewed as soon as they can, because one of the parcels is soon to be sold as soon as the, uh, contract's renewed. They asked if they can add another residence to it, and I told them it's one, one service line per dwelling. If, and if they decided they wanted to add another facility, another dwelling to it, they would have to come to council, and we would amend the contract and approve it for an additional water tap if they wanted to do that. So, yeah, they would have to come back to me, and then I would come back to you, to amend the contract for one or two additional water taps.
So does that system-wide, or, I mean, one, one parcel, one water tap?
Correct, it's one tap per dwelling, that's correct. So, and that's city limits, extraterritorial, that's in our ordinance, so, if you put a garage that's not attached to your home, and you wanna put a bathroom in it, can't do that, you have to get a separate water tap for that separate dwelling.
If a person subdivided their property, uh, they would not be entitled to a water tap for their property?
That's one of the main reasons our ordinance is like that, we've had, in the past, Mr. Smith, only two homes right next door to each other, you had one tap, one service line going to property line, and then they tee it off, and put two separate meters to both houses as well. He passed away, the kids live in Denver, his brains are noise, they sell the homes, now you got two separate property owners to the two homes. A water leak develops in the water service under the street, it belongs to both individuals. We give them a water leak repair notice, one person says, I can afford it, and I'm not gonna pay for all of it, the other one's retired, on social security, they don't have the money to fix it, so that's the reason, and then we end up in litigations. We dig it up with the tap, we shut it off, if they don't comply, now both people are without water until it's fixed. So that's why we require one tap per dwelling in case it's ever subdivided, and the tap has to be located on their own frontage. That's why ordinance is the way it is, so, so, yeah, they have four taps, one tap per parcel, if they wanted to add a separate dwelling, they'd have to purchase another water tap from us with council approval, and amend the contract, then they could get a separate tap for the other dwellings, just in case they should split it, it has a separate address, go onto that separate town.
No, definitely.
I, I noticed it in the contract, it said that they're gonna be responsible for maintaining, repairing, and replacing metering equipment, do they have metering equipment?
It's already there, everything's in place, the booster station's there, the meter's there, back pro prevention, everything's already there.
Do they have the same that everybody in Trinidad has?
Pretty much, it's, it's, yeah, depending on them, the type of back pro preventions required, if they're on a higher elevation, they have to have RP devices, some are dual texts, it just depends on the situation, but, yeah, everybody has to have that, so, and they already have, they're all that in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay. The thing that I was a little confused about, and in the original language, it said is, talks about in perpetuity, and then it says every, and every ten years, why not just say every ten years instead of, because perpetuity means it just goes on forever, without the ten-year agreement?
The original contract, when it was written up back in nineteen eighty-one, it was a ten-year contract with three ten-year renewals. When I looked at the contract, it don't look like those three ten years were ever even renewed, so we just continued with the original contract. So, when we talked to Alliance Gaddis, our water attorney, they recommended that we do perpet, they've been in there, what, ten, thirty, forty years already, so there's no reason to continue doing ten-year renewals automatically, just do perpetuity. If, all of our rules still apply, if we should go through a drought, that after Terry old toe taps, we would still be able to shut them down, if we decide not to maintain that water main that they're tapped on to, we can shut them down, we still have all those same rights. So rather than go through all the renewals every ten years, it's just easier, they've already established, they've been there four years, just to do a perpetuity, but our hands are not tied to that, we still have the.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Correct.
So if there, if it has language in there, about every ten years, probably just we lose that property.
What, the old contract, the new contract now will supersede the old one? Okay.
The other thing too is that, you know, anytime there's, there's an association, even though there's only four members like this, are they required to have meetings, yearly meetings, and report back to the, give, report back to the city?
No.
I didn't see anything in the.
No, all we require is, we have to have one person basically in charge, we need to know who to send the water bill to for the master meter, we're not gonna send it to all four property owners, some people have two hundred, like some of our alley have two hundred and two taps. We send it to the president or whoever's in charge, secretary, they pay that, the water bill for the master meter, and then normally the water associations have a secretary, somebody that reads the meters, they charge, they, they charge whatever they feel like they need to for the water meter, for each one, plus they usually add on small, they have water main breaks, or a pump station builder, they add extra into their savings, that way they have money to do the repairs, so we don't control how much they charge their members, it's just what we charge them for that master meter, everything downstream of that meter is on them.
If, I remember, I think there's only one house in that area right now, or is there two?
Right now, there's only one using water, correct.
Okay, right now, way in the back?
Yeah, and there's another one that's, that's under contract to be purchased soon, and then they wanna go ahead, get, get something going up there also.
All right. Any other questions? Can you call vote, please?
Tabano?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight B, consideration of city manager evaluation criteria, Ms. Valente.
Good evening, Council, I almost missed my turn because I'm not last. So, anyway, you guys have been through this before, can you believe it's been an entire year?
I can't believe it.
So, um, just wanted to let you know, and give you a format, we're going to schedule an executive session for the meeting of August fifteenth, which gives you about two weeks to fill out your form, and then you can bring it to that executive session, and then, um, we'll be putting out, uh, these same evaluations tomorrow at the library and here at City Hall for the public to input if they want, and that will be in the newspaper next week.
And staff will also be allowed to evaluate, right?
Sure.
Any questions? Call vote, please?
Need a motion?
Oh, you need, you need a motion? Second?
Second.
Any rule discussion? Call vote, please?
Tabano?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item C, consideration of agreement with Brownsville Engineering and Controls for the Trinidad wastewater treatment plant, SCADA system, retain motion? So moved, second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Viall, what do you got?
Key value, we have, the water department currently have their own SCADA system to monitor, uh, water tanks, our pump station, that's what keeps the tanks full, it monitors the chlorine, the turbid area, the major stations, more regulated stations, to include the water treatment plant, the wastewater plant, Morning Lake, and the water treatment plant in Morning Lake. The wastewater treatment plant, their SCADA system is very old, it's, it's on its last leg, like most computers, what's given, they don't even service them anymore, so they looked into getting a standalone SCADA system similar to ours, but Brownsville Engineering recommended that they could actually piggyback us, they could work off of our server and save the city some money without having to buy their separate server and have their own system. We could set it up to where the guys in the water department and the water treatment plant just see the water, we won't see the wastewater, they could set it up to where they only see the wastewater function, they don't see the water, that way we can't be mess with it, so it's SCADA system. Our system, our five-year base agreement, I think was in twenty twenty-one, it was a five-year lease, so, if council approves the wastewater treatment plant's SCADA system, it's gonna go beyond ours. But Brownsville Engineering, when they initially gave us our price, I think we're paying thirty-seven ninety per month for our system, after that five-year lease, it should go down probably twenty, twenty-five percent, because the initial cost they're charging is, is for new equipment, that's new PLCs, radios, antennas, so they include that in that first five year. After the five years, the system's already installed, so now the, the lease remains, but we don't have to incorporate the cost of all the new equipment. If something goes down with that, they can then replace the PLC, they could remote in and troubleshoot everything, and we don't get charged after that probably is new equipment. We initially, in the water department, purchased it, and anytime we had to have them work on it, they charged us for that, and it ended up costing us more money, so that's why we did the lease. So they wanna piggyback us, it would save roughly about five, fifty thousand dollars by piggybacking us, if they do a standalone, they have to buy the server, all the different software, so that they're on their own, so it'll save the city about fifty thousand dollars. And they also said, after their five-year lease, their monthly bill will go from, what is it, forty-seven, seventy-six, probably drop about forty percent on the next five year lease, because now you don't have to purchase the equipment, it's already installed, it's just a matter of maintaining the existing equipment.
Okay, questions?
No, so, Mark, so the water treatment plant has this system.
It does.
Does the company that runs this, the sewer department, the wastewater department, do they incur that expense, or do they give it to us? So we're paying for this already?
We're paying for the waters out of the city's budget, I don't, I'll defer that to Mr. Rube, I don't know if Jacobs will be paying this monthly, or where does the city's paying that monthly?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so, it'll be Jacobs paying on our behalf, I believe.
Okay.
So it'll be part of their contract and services we pay for.
I just wanted to make sure that it wouldn't interfere with our budget for that we, for that department.
Yeah.
Well, here's a question I have, and then I'll turn it over.
Yeah, thank you.
Also in that, are you, is that gonna be a back charge to us, or is that gonna be within their parameter of that hundred and some thousand, and we gotta pay them money?
I'll have to talk with J D. on that, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, um, but I do know for the, um, initial installation and everything upfront, we have money budgeted, um, in reserves for our wastewater budget, so we'll be able to, to fund the improvements, um, I will check with J D. as to how that billing will work, but it is absolutely the city's responsibility to pay those fees.
Any other questions? Was that you? No.
I just, I think it's a good idea that you guys look into doing that, saving us money, so, that's a really good savings for us.
It is, and it's been working real well for us, so.
Did anyone else present an offer to do this on behalf of the city?
Not to my behalf, just because, uh, Brownsville Engineering is already invested in us, we have a current lease with them, the wastewater needs something now, so it's, it just saves money just to piggyback us, since we already have the system installed, so, and we've had them for several years, more than five years, because the water treatment plant out there, we've been using them for quite a while, and then, when we ended up doing it, we piggybacked them, and now wastewater wants to jump in with us, so.
And how's it from their performance, but has it been satisfied?
Oh, yeah, we, we had some issues about two o'clock in the morning here, about a month and a half ago, we call them, they answer, they remote in, they troubleshoot it, they can make the changes, and our pump systems, or our water tanks are back up and running, if it's mechanical, they'll send somebody down there based out of Denver, they'll send, send somebody down to do the repair anyway, so, yeah, they've been, we have no complaints with them, yeah, they've been working real well for us.
And the routine maintenance is part of the old lease and the new five-year lease, right?
That's correct.
So what, what system is this replacing, then? I think I've.
As the wastewater treatment plant, I don't, it's, it's old, I don't even know what they have down there, it's, they're still running off of a computer, they're, it's been several years since I've been there, I'm not familiar with, with their current music, I know it's outdated, just like, prior to the water department going to Brownsville, we, ours was a Tesco, that's the brand and company we were using, Territorial, Denver was coming down, it got to the point where our labor board, our, basically the PLCs, we'd send them in for repair, and Tesco was looking for used parts on the PLCs to just keep them going for us, and they finally told us, we're not servicing anymore, you guys are gonna have to invest in something else, they're so, so old, and I think we did that back in eighty-one, I don't know how long they've been.
Yeah, SCADA, SCADA changes pretty quickly.
Oh, it does.
So how many sites will this?
To the, to the wastewater?
Yeah.
It'll be monitoring their, their basins, their. It'll be monitoring their, their basins, their, their pumps, their blowers. Everything's located there, their pump stations, their lift stations, they can monitor their whole source.
So it's gonna be local to that operation primarily, or will it reach out to every lift station?
I don't know to what extent they went. I would assume they went to their lift stations. If they haven't, they'll have the ability to do that. I didn't see their complete itinerary of what they're gonna install. So, but if they didn't, they'll have that ability. But I know it's gonna monitor everything at the wastewater plant, and I'm assuming their lift stations also.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
I think it would be important, like, you know, follow up on what you just said, is that to find out if that's gonna be one of their things to make sure that they do tie into the lift stations to monitor.
If, if it's monitoring their lift stations now, then it's gonna do exactly what their SCADA system's doing now. And if it's not, they'll have the ability to have to do it. So whatever their SCADA system is currently monitoring, the new system will do everything better than what it's currently doing, so.
The only other couple of questions that I have is, is they're requiring all the employees that are tied into the wastewater system in City Hall here to sign an NDA on disclosure?
Are you talking about the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the contract, so I-
Do you have any issues with that?
Mr. Mayor, there is some proprietary information, so I assume that's why that language is in there. I don't have any issues with that, but from a public record standpoint, there may be some things in there that we would have to disclose upon request.
Yeah, it does say that, that if they, you don't have to turn that in immediately, but if they request it, then-
Exactly.
They did say that, they did read that. The other thing that I saw in here is that they're, you know, anything that they install is gonna require, whether it's phone systems, whether it's going to be power to the system. They're not responsible to pay any of that, I wonder why?
Just, well, our-
It's up to us to pay those charges.
Our utilities, yeah, that's our, we can-
Wonder why?
Well, Mr. Mayor, they're the operator on our behalf, but as far as anything tangible, any costs incurred in the operations, that's entirely on us.
I was thinking like on a monthly basis, I thought that they would have some kind of a-
Yeah.
Back charge.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm, I'm not sure how it's structured, but, and I don't know if you are, Mark, but certainly it's, it's definitely the city's responsibility to pay those costs however it's billed.
Yeah, I did see that.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Hold both, please?
Debono?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item nine, council reports.
Los Angeles County Veteran Service Officer Ray Odey conducted a PAC Act seminar at the Mount Carmel Community Wellness Center last week to help fill out claims. There was also a financial advisor there to help answer the questions that veterans and their families may have, and it was attended by forty-seven people. So it was very well done.
Mary was there for-
Yeah, Mary was there.
Yeah. Heidi? Yeah. I have a couple of things. First of all, I went to the Commission on the Unhoused Committee with Mr. Ruge. Are you chairing?
Apparently so.
You're the board of the hall?
Yes.
So we're, we're getting, we're trying to get the foundation laid for all the legal ease now, and so we're gonna try and do, I'm thinking this is what, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ruge, but we're trying to do that, but in addition to that, we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do when winter hits, and that's only a couple of months away. We were told that the Luthen Parish Hall isn't a vac- well, it's not usable anymore because the shower and facilities are not in operation, so we're gonna have to get our heads together and find out a solution as soon as possible because bad weather's only, what, three months away, two months away?
No, no. Ground crews are waiting.
Yeah, yeah, could be. And also, I just, I went down to the New Hilton Garden Inn property, and I went to the back of the property by the river. I've lived here all my life and did not know there was a separate canal. Because I've never been able to get that close to the river. But it's a beautiful property. I've, I've gotten a description of what future plans for it are gonna be, and from what it was four or five years ago to what it is now is pretty amazing. And I was told by hotel staff that they're, they've got, over the past, what, ten days that they've been in operation, they've got an eighty percent occupancy. Chaching, chaching with the tourism tax. So kudos to Kip Hamden and Trinidad Development Group, and to the city of Trinidad for putting that money in to make sure the infrastructure was there for that project to be come to fruition.
Well, the other thing too is that the money that we put in also, we have to update the entire service plan because there was an issue.
Right.
We were collapsed, we've talked about the issue also.
Right. But it, it's beautiful, so go down and check it out.
I don't have anything, I've got a meeting coming up here at the end of the month with ARPA. We have a project going, but won't know anything until get some more further information. So that's on that, two firsts.
Was that, was the?
So with the mayor, I got to attend a tour and our city manager, a tour of all of the facilities that the Office of Economic Development and International Trade has helped fund in the Trinidad area, including the Fox West Theater, Space to Create, the East Street School, the whole Eternity site that is on schedule to be renovated. And also, I learned about what's coming in to the warehouse that's just north- yeah, the old Coca-Cola building that's just north of T H C, is that right? Is a new business, a really exciting new business called Southern Colorado Tofu. And so we got a tour of that, and their long-term plans are to hire about, I think, twenty people?
I didn't hear the numbers.
I think it was about twenty, but they should be up and running sometime this month. So it was really amazing, and every time I drive by there, I was like, I wish somebody would come and do that. They are, and it was done with the help of a rural upstart grant that their company got, and it's something that if people are interested in starting businesses around here, definitely look into. So, but it was really fun, and it really caused me to be grateful for all the work that, what it does with us.
Are they operational yet?
They will be sometime later this week.
Do you need any tofu?
Have any available, but all the machinery is there, and they're building the cooling rooms, and it's just, it's all right, I'm so excited. Anyways, that's all I have.
Parks and Recreation, we're doing some magnificent things with the skate park. Getting that put back together, getting the graffiti taken care of, getting all the cracks and crevices because for the young folks who like to skateboard.
Yeah, they skateboard out in the neighborhood.
So that's going on. We're also still working on the pickleball situation and getting the underground water situation looked at at the, at the school, make sure that that's a go or maybe not a go, I don't know. We're still looking at that. And we're also laying some concrete for a, a chair for disabled, disabled wheelchair.
Yeah, it's an accessible swing set.
I had several people contacting this week, and I think, I think the concerns were valid, and I'd like to see if we can set up a work session for it. But their concern was the condition of the pond at Central Park specifically for fishing. I did go there, and there is, there is a lot of things that would make it difficult to fish that place. And I think in a more overarching approach to it, it would, it would really add a lot for local youth to do if we made some minor changes, and maybe maintenance would make a major impact for local youth. I think if it'd be possible, potentially, we could include some specialty, people with specialty knowledge in that area, maybe Department of Wildlife biologist or something, just learn what we need to do to help that space. But I think a work session might be helpful for that, potentially tie into Parks and Rec as well. I'll have an update next time for a TPR.
And I agree with you, you know, that the platform that they have out there has kind of gone in disrepair. Last time I was down there, it was not very good, but it needs some updating, and I'm not sure all that's to get done, but that's just one component of the park. And I know that, and I know that you were mentioning something last time, but there's some work ongoing to kind of clean up all of the-
There is, but-
All of the stuff ruined in it, so I think that's an issue. One thing I'll, you mentioned about the World Jump Start, and I'm not sure how many of the people that are here or listening in tonight really knows what, really know what Jump Start is about. This came about several, I don't know, four or five years ago, World Jump Start. And it's a program that is through the state of Colorado, and what that is, is if a business comes into an area and there is no other business like that, they start out within the state of Colorado, but then they change that, and that is within a certain mileage or whatever, I think that's changed. What they do is they get some tax benefits, not only to the business, but even to the employee. So it, it benefits a new business to come into an area that has never been to an area. So that's the premises behind the World Jump Start program. I know when it first came out, Grand Junction had real good success with it, and I'm glad to see that, you know, this tofu industry coming in, you know, they're gonna benefit from that, so that's good to see. But it was, it was really good to see that, more, more important to see that building being utilized. I, like you, go drive there, I kept driving by there all the time, I kept saying, I wish somebody would, you know, do something there, but now we do have someone, so it's good to see. Also attended the Trinidad Community Foundation Grant Awards that they gave up, and that one real well, they gave up, I don't know, ten, at least ten different ones? And people were all very appreciative of it, and I thank the foundation for what they do. It's just, because it takes a lot of work off of us and let them distribute what is needed. And they do have a process that meets all of our requirements and meets their requirements more so. They're very stringent as to how they process those, those plants, so they do, they do a really good job. One thing I was gonna ask, and of course, person of other recreation is not here today, but Mr. Ruge might have this answer. You know, our bike lane striping, is there any reason why we didn't get the Highway Twelve going up to the edge of town striped? Is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure, Mayor. If, if anything, it's probably a financial reason, but we will look into that.
Yeah, because I was thinking if, yeah, that, because the road, now the roads there are wider.
That's a good idea.
And I thought that would be an additional area for bike lane striping.
And I think we were all surprised with the cost of how much bike lane striping is, but that might be a good partnership with CDOT to look into.
Those are all I have. Mr. Ruge, what do you have?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. I just wanted to double down on the visit from OEDIT. It's always so nice to have people from outside Trinidad come to Trinidad. And we had the upper echelon of OEDIT staff here. Some of them hadn't been here for a few years, they saw the box when it wasn't anywhere close to what it is right now, and just the enthusiasm, the excitement for Trinidad was resounding. So I think we have captured their hearts, and we'll have some really good support from them going forward. Specific to the tofu factory, I wanted to let you all know what an opportunity we have here in Trinidad. The tofu factory can be a prime example of, the cost for an acre of land in the Denver metro area is about a half million dollars. The cost of an acre of land here in Trinidad is less than five thousand dollars in certain areas. So to be able to come manufacture here and distribute regionally, it's, it's really a good value for businesses. So I would like to work to get our story about the tofu manufacturing coming here out to encourage other businesses to follow suit, and I think that would be a really good fit for us. So just wanted to follow up on that, and then the last thing, the fun thing, for one of us anyway, Tony Hadow over at our police department, who worked in code enforcement, had his official retirement today. So we're celebrating that, and just want to wish him really well on his way out, and thank you for your service to our community.
Yeah, I did want to add something about the OEDIT that I thought was really super important. Anytime that we get any kind of, that type of people down here from the state level, it's always, and especially like Dola, OEDIT, some of these people have helped us fund projects. It's always a good idea to tell them and thank them for what they've done for our community, and I did mention that to them, saying that, especially thank OEDIT for, because they have been a big, they've been very important in like the Space Create project, they had other projects as well. And of course, Dola was not there, well, yeah, they worked there.
Yeah, Tara was there.
Tara was there, and I did mention that, those two entities are very, very important for the city of Trinidad, not only in the past, not only today, but going forward. They're gonna be a very important component in what happens in the next few years, so. Mr. Downs, I know you're listening in, do you have anything to report?
I do, Mayor and council, good evening. I'm sorry I'm not there, I miss you all. I haven't zoomed in, I don't think, since the pandemic, so this is a little weird. Anyway, good evening. I don't have a report, and I hope all of you are well.
Well, that, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Hold both, please?
Debono?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Good evening, and thank you for attending.